Hello, everyone. This is the Board of Trustees meeting for the Stevens Memorial Library. I am going to call us to order at 5:00. And I need to do a roll call. And I will start with Kathleen.
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
I'll myself and Kavanaugh, I should say last names. Stan Limper.
Here.
Bill Duffy. Nope. Eva Humory.
Here.
Earl Svensson.
Here.
Mary Deshaun. And Mark Rogers.
Here.
Mary is on, but she's muted.
We can't, yeah.
Yeah.
That must be the default.
Yeah. It wants to mute.
You need to go to the white bar at the bottom, Mary.
Got it.
There you go.
There you go.
You got it.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. It's good to see everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. And we'll start with public comments. Cindy, have there been any emails?
No, there has not. And I went through, I just checked a few minutes ago. There are no public comments. Nope. No public comments have come in.
Okay, then we'll move on to the library updates, mostly about reopening, and what's been happening with that. So I'll turn it over to Kathleen.
We had our very soft opening on Monday. We are admitting patrons by appointment. It's a 30-minute appointment that starts on the hour. We're doing from one at 10, one at 11. We have a break so staff can get lunch. And then there's an appointment at 1:00 and appointment at 2:00. Each of the appointment times allows up to 10 people in. We were able to find a very useful piece of software called Acuity Scheduling that's let us put together a calendar. It's linked on the library main page website. If you go to latest reopening news, I also emailed that link to you all, that patrons can look and pick the time they want and then specify the purpose of their visit so we can manage the occupancy level within each space in the library. We have a map out there that when we greet people at the door, when people make the appointment, they get a confirmation email. When it's a day before, they receive a second email that reminds them of their health check questions so that if they made the appointment several days in advance, when they were healthy, we have a second option. When they arrive at the building, the door is, the lower lobby is locked. There's a breather there at the moment it's clean. And we go through the health cleaning questions again before they're admitted. They are required to wear masks at all times during the building and it must cover their nose as well as their mouth. We ask them to clean their hands when they first come through the lower lobby door and they're offered gloves if they would like to have those while they're here. We have done just very basic publicity, which is sending some emails to groups like yourself and their friends. And then we've put something on the website. We've not done a social media blast yet. We think once the word is out there, we will have a lot of people interested. So we wanted to take the opportunity and make sure that we'd covered really the major points of what to do and what to happen in the building. We have both patrons have a good experience while being safe and the staffs. The goal always is that now that we are doing this, we'll be able to continue doing this. There won't be reasons to suddenly stop. Our curbside is very busy. We were able to produce a children's space of materials on the top floor that allowed us to keep the bottom floor basically closed. The children's room is now called curbside operations. Stan peeked through the window on his visit and he could see that the table was pretty well loaded. We can have up to 70 people come, or 70 families coming each day to pick things up from curbside. And we may not get 70 every day, but we're getting quite a few appointments. So the latest, and we're inching up on each of these services. So things like how many appointments may inch up into more hours. When standards may be changed in terms of the wider community, maybe it'll be more than 10 people for visits. Right now, the 10 people is set at 10 because of the number of staff we have in the building, occupancy needs to cover both staff. It's really, yes, it's just a headcount regardless of who you are or the why you're there. The curbside pickup, we have extended now. So on Wednesday night and Thursday night, we've extended them, I think, until 7:00 p.m. So people are able to pick things up a little bit later in the evening. Remote services in terms of ebooks and all those things that are going on. We've just finished our summer program. So for the next couple of weeks, there won't be any more group meetings here. Dog trainers or bird watchers talk about various kinds of programs. But we're anticipating starting those kinds of programs again probably towards the end of September. But we're going to take some time to think about what we can do to be serving. We expect that we will not have any kind of group activities in the building for some months to come. Cindy, anything else about the reopening?
No, I don't think so. We've got everybody back in, all the schedules, so that everybody is back on sort of the regular schedule. We're trying to get everybody in. It's all new jobs, really, for people. It's new functions, working curbside, working with the patrons and keeping things clean and everything else. So everybody's been really, the staff has been tremendous, really picking up these new responsibilities, setting up new procedures, how to get things done. And we've got a lot of nice electronic tools out there that we've been able to get out. And it's been a big effort by staff and, of course, Kathleen's leadership. So it's been good.
Kathleen, may I, may I make a comment? Do you mind?
Sure.
So I did avail myself of the soft opening and went in at 2:00 on Monday and was extremely impressed by how well Kathleen and Cindy and the staff have laid out the building for the, under the circumstances. You know, there's lots of indicators about, you know, traffic flow and, you know, one-way arrows and all kinds of stuff like that. And it's very well organized. So I was very impressed by that. A lot of good, a lot of good signage everywhere to encourage you. And, you know, Kathleen sort of read me my rights before I entered the building, right? Read this for random statements, you know, required by law. Blah, blah, blah. So it was all, it was all very good. A couple of things, I guess I took note of Kathleen. And, you know, you might, I know, I know it's, you tell people this, but I think you might want to think about emphasizing it maybe, was the fact that you can only come in for one purpose, right? So if you're, if you're an adult, but a parent, you can come in as a parent with your child and do a children's thing, but you cannot then do an adult thing. So it's a single-use appointment. So, you know, it's not a big deal, but it's just a deal. So, you know, if a parent comes in with their child and does a, you know, children's area thing, then they want to go get a book. You have, you know, it's like, no, sorry, you can't do that. So.
So it's not like you can't come in and just wander around looking at stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And I completely understand. I, I think that's, you know, I think that's a very reasonable approach. But, you know, I think you just need to make sure that people understand that. The second thing was that people need to know if they actually come in on an appointment, they, like me, they can't actually literally get their books, which may be on hold themselves, right? So that's something else. You still have to go through the curbside process just because of the way it works. So, I mean, that's a problem and, you know, but I think people might need to just be aware of that so that they're, they're not thinking they're coming in on an appointment and they'll be able to pick up any books they have on.
So they can't come in and just browse on the shelves?
Well, no. And you can go in and go to an area and pick out books and then go check them out. You could do that. But if you have books that are on hold.
Oh, okay.
You cannot get those books directly. You, they're not on the shelf that you have access to anymore. They're in the quarantine area or the past quarantine area.
Yeah. And they're curbside, they're in curbside operations.
Yeah.
You'd need to set up two appointments, one for curbside and one to go into the library. Is that right?
Yes. So one, there's, there's separate appointments. It's, it's separate areas to the building. One, you get into the building. One, you don't have access to the building. And there has to be a runner available to bring it out to you. So it's really about the staffing that causes us to do this. We did talk about this when we were planning and we said, let's try it this way first. Right now, when it's just a few people coming in, it would be easy perhaps to do it. But if we start getting, you know, a regular stream of people, it will be too difficult to do that because we'll be disrupting the curbside staff who are already trying to wait on another, a person who already has a prior appointment.
Right. Right, that makes complete sense to me. But I think it's important that people are just aware of that. So they're not coming in on an appointment thinking they're going to go get their books on hold and they're not able to do that. So that's all. The one other, the one other comment I wanted to make was that it took me a little while to feel, feel comfortable with the way that my account was working. So typically, the way it works for me is because I do take out and check in a lot of books, after I've taken a stack of books back to the library and handed them in, the staff very typically in the past, very promptly check them in. And I could go within, almost within minutes, to check my account and see that they were all gone off my record. So now I, I was in the habit of doing that. Now I bring the books back and now that list is not getting smaller, it's growing, right? Every time I bring books back, the list gets longer and longer because those books are still on my, in my account because they're all quarantined, right? So it took a while to sort of realize that even, even though I was pretty sure I had taken the books back, the materials, whatever they were, I had to wait at least five days for them to get out of quarantine and then get checked back into the system. So that just took me a little while to get used to that. But now, you know, it's been long enough. So the stuff that I had taken back is now all clear in my account. So now I'm feeling more comfortable again that I actually took stuff back. Because every once in a while, I think I've taken stuff back and it's still in my account and I have to go look for it because I, I put it someplace and didn't realize it. So, but that's the only other thing that I've noticed as a result of this. Other than that, I, you know, I, you know, I've used curbside pickup, gosh, four or five times and it's worked great. You know, it's really, it's very convenient and, you know, just setting up an appointment and the time and all of that. So, and even, even in one case, I was concerned because more books than I had expected came in at one time. And I thought, gosh, that's a lot of books. I hope I can put those in bags. But they were great. They took care of it and handled it all. It was very good. Everybody is doing a great job.
Eva, you want to say something?
Yes, I have a question. So I'm raising my hand. It's a little different not being in the room so we can't see. So Stan's point about his, so this is sort of a different question. It hasn't occurred to me in a very long time. Do we have a limit on how many books someone, someone like Stan can take out? You know? So would this be an issue because he would reach his limit due to how things are being processed?
I don't believe that there are any limits set in the Symphony Program, but I can check on that. We've not had, we've not had a limit as a standard here in Stevens for a long time. And I don't know that there's anything set within the computer program to do it. I will tell you that, you know, one of the things we've talked about is, you know, having someone come in and basically clean off the shelves, if you will. So I did, I did ask the other day and a staff member said, well, we do have this one family that has about 140 books.
Oh, wow.
So my first question was, Anne, tell me about the family. It's a very regular family who uses the library a lot. They have multiple children and the children are big readers. They are very good about bringing their materials back. And I said, then it's not a problem. If you said you'd never heard from these people and they want 140 DVDs, we might have it. And that the staff is sensitive to those kinds of circumstances.
Wow.
Wow.
It's wonderful to hear that it's been, and apparently the mother is also a school teacher, which says why the kids are great readers, so.
So Eva, let me, let me speak to that because I am, in fact, a scoff log. There is such a thing, right? So I was told, you know, years ago, that there were, the limit on the number of books you could take out at one time or materials was 30, right? That was it. And so.
Okay.
I, under routine circumstances, not pandemic circumstances, I often am over or even well over that number. The staff is always very tolerant of me and they could be sort of the, you know, do you have a lot of stuff? How, how's that going? You know? I was like, really? Oh, good, good. I'm doing, that's great. You know, and I guess to Kathleen's point, I, I, I hope I've demonstrated my reliability and not losing stuff and not, you know, destroying. So, you know, it all comes back. And for me, the thing that sometimes screws me up and I should learn how to use the system better, I often get into sort of search, research patterns and start putting lots and lots of books on hold and don't realize. So all of a sudden, I have 20 or 30 books on hold and then 15 or 20 of them show up at one time. You're right. So that gets really complicated really fast. And I just, there's a way in the system that you, you can sort of work around that by delaying a hold for some amount of time so they don't all come in at one time. But I should figure out how to do that. But, but I've never had a problem with that. And typically speaking, nobody ever has brought it up with me because they're well aware. I look at my record on their computers that I have often more than 30 books.
Oh, my gosh. Wow.
That was, that was a very old limit from a number of years ago. We haven't had that one for a long time. So we, we want the books out. They just gather dust if they sit here. They're better if they're in somebody's house than here.
Yeah, that's right. The other thing you could do, of course, Dan, is I think there's a wish, they call it a wish list. You can put books that you're not quite ready to check out in there if you feel like you've got too many, but then you don't forget them. Of course, they might be checked out when you want them.
Yeah, I, yeah, I could, I could be a smarter patron. Yeah, you're right.
I'm just telling you what they are. You can use it or not.
I understand. No, I understand. I, it just, it's just changing habits. That's all. I'm good.
Yep.
Kathleen Rogers, I've got a couple of questions following up on this. Are you still able to count the patrons that you're serving through these alternate methods?
Probably. We haven't actually tried to do much yet. So people are, in the beginning, we were doing the curbside pickup. It was a phone reservation. And so we didn't necessarily have something recorded in the computer, but it should have been on a piece of paper on a clipboard. I'm not sure where the clipboard and the paper are. We were very fortunate and advanced to a computer calendar for people to make reservations. And now we should be able to go and look back at those reservations. One of the things I need to check is that the program that we're using for curbside pickup does not have a self-cleaning routine. So if you put in a reservation, it should still be there for some months. But I need to check on that just to make sure that we take account. Some programs have a, you know, an automatic recycle function where after 30 days, they delete the old spam or some other. So I just need to, that's a good one for me to check on that.
And the other question is, I'm assuming that there is no requirement to have a car for curbside pickup. So if I'm a walker, I can, I can just schedule a pickup?
We do ask people that when you, and we tell people when we're making appointments and it's on the calendar, if you will be walking, to let us know ahead of time so we can be prepared.
Okay.
And what we've done in the past is we come out, we set it on the sidewalk, step back on the stairs. We, so when people come, right now, we do ask, you know, confirm your name. We ask for the last four digits of your library card and I'm going to make sure we give the right Rogers bag to the right Rogers person. And then we normally will put it in the trunk or in the back hatch. And if you're, if you were a walker, then we've just set it on the curbside. Again, the confirmation routine, the right person gets it. Step back so you can step forward. We've had a few people who are walkers who've come. It seemed to work pretty smoothly.
Or maybe bicycles, right? You can do that. Yeah.
Are the items in bags?
Everything goes in bags. They go into brown paper bags. Plastic holds things longer, things that are undesirable. So paper, especially brown paper bags and brown, brown cardboard are a much better option for, you know, handing stuff around to people.
Cardboard boxes with Stan and bags for everybody to know.
We do have to buy.
Boxes, Stan.
We have to buy the biggest bags we can find.
Stan, I used to limit the number of books I could take out to what I could carry.
There you go.
For you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, that was, yeah. So, yeah, right. Yeah, no, that would, that would. Yeah, I, unfortunately, I progressed to the Stevens Memorial Book Bag thing. So now I can go further than what I can carry.
And we all don't know, but he's got one of those grocery carts outside. Bring them to his car.
That's all right.
Okay. Are we done with that topic or you want to?
The other thing that, because we've mentioned software here a couple of times, we have made some changes to the front page of the library website. We're experimenting a little bit with some of the language there and organization to make it a little easier to use. And this leads us into our staffing discussion, which is, you know, good news in many fronts. We have been able to hire the Electronic Resources Librarian. Her name is Sarah Allwarden. And she is very sharp when it comes to computers. She's, she's really picked up very fast. She's a very eager learner. So if I say, what about this? She'll go find out and she'll come back and give me a pretty good summary and we'll talk about the options, you know? What are the good points? What are the bad points? She's been doing a lot of this work and she's looking forward to doing more on the website. The one thing is I need to keep kind of reminding her because she's young and full of energy, is that we do have some other things that we need to do at the same time. So that pays it a little bit. But I see the potential there to do more. We just didn't have the potential to do much before. And then now we have that potential. So we're going to try to take advantage of that in increments.
So Kathleen, if you will, let me comment on that. I've been very impressed by some of the activity on the website. It's been great. I mean, it's been really relevant, useful stuff, sort of very engaging and all of that. I think that's, that's really been nice. I've really been impressed by that. And if she's doing that, I'm very impressed with her. The other, the other activity that's really impressed me has been all these YouTube videos that people have been putting out for children in particular. Very impressive, very great. And I, I hope that, you know, for, for Mark's question, we can get some statistics as people are actually looking at those videos.
Yeah.
Typically, you can do that, find out if people are viewing the videos. But I've been very impressed with that about, you know, they, you know, they see, you know, the librarian, children's librarian seem very enthusiastic and, you know, they have great topics and she seems super. I mean, it just seems, what a great idea, man, that they're putting in the, they seem to have the energy and enthusiasm to do that. So that's a great thing.
I will tell you that one of those 25-minute storytimes takes eight to 10 hours of production behind the scenes.
I believe.
I will, I will tell you that I now refer to people and I tell them that I'm a, I now run a television studio because that's a program. That's, if you look at many, and not to disparage anybody else, but if you look at many of the storytimes from other libraries, it's the librarian sitting on a chair, she's reading a book and holding the pictures. And so we have a real production that's going on there. And Ron DeCunio, who does that, has used a lot of the time when we've been not able to be in the building to take a lot of, get a lot of training. There's nothing like YouTube if you need to learn how to do something, whether it's fix the garage door or how to, you know, improve your skills on camera. So she, she's put a lot of time and energy into learning those skills. We've already decided that we will keep, well, we'll have the YouTube channel as long as we want to have it. But we were thinking that we would continue even when, you know, we can all go back to whatever, that we would probably try to have a pajama storytime one night a week that maybe aired at 6:00 p.m. So you've got, because the pajama storytime is for the guys that are three to five years old and you're not bringing them out at six at night. They should be having dinner in their pajamas and going to sleep by seven or eight to make mommy and daddy happy. So we've talked about how some of these things have a life after COVID. And curbside is the same thing, that it, it's working well. We would probably need to make it a little bit smoother and we wouldn't have everybody doing it. So we'd find a way to staff to support things like a curbside for people who need that option, as well as to have, you know, some of these programs be virtual because not everybody can get out all the time.
You know, Kathleen, I think that curbside in the winter, especially for seniors, might be a very good idea to keep them safe and not walking around on slippery sidewalks. Although them in the car might be another issue, but, you know.
So let them get out. You know what you mean.
You know? You know, you're worrying about that.
Well, I think I said in an email, like, some people on the north end of our mom's Facebook page were really raving about what the library had to offer. And there was a whole discussion going on about the craft kits. And they're like, yeah, you can pick them up. And everyone was jumping in on it like, wow, that's amazing, you know? I should have took a screenshot of it.
So, well, when I, when I went into the library the other day and I went to the children's area, our children's librarian has put together some age-relevant, like, book bags, right? Picked out a group of books for an age, an age range. And you could just grab, sort of do a grab and go on, you know, a few books to take, to take home and read. So another very convenient thing that hopefully lasts beyond COVID, right? I think that's a great idea too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Particularly for moms so they don't have to, you know, if their kid's like, well, I don't know, I want to get one of these. And, you know, just here, let's take this and we'll try this out.
Yeah.
Can I ask Kathleen about the computers? Are people making any appointments to use the computers?
We have not had any appointments or computers yet. Because we haven't done a lot of publicity, it's just been a few people who've sort of found us by being in proximity to us. And that may change. In some ways, it's not a bad thing from my perspective because our protective screens are not due until August 30. Well, I think they're due to ship on August 31st. So while we've got eight stations set up, we only have four that can be used at the same time in order to create that distance. So maybe by the time business picks up for the computers, the dividers will be here and we'll be able to do more.
Yeah. So the rest of the board should know that this actually, this computer area is giving us the opportunity to sort of take a look at what we had talked about in terms of fixing out the computers anyway. We had talked about changing that later. So now we're doing a little bit of a dress rehearsal on it to see what, if we like it. And it caught us right before we were thinking about changing the order for furniture. So now we're doing a dress rehearsal, using the furniture we had to see how it works. So it actually sort of worked out for us in terms of that area.
Kathleen, where did all the reference books go?
So I will be honest and say, many of the reference books have gone to paper recycling heaven. We have, we have encyclopedias that had copyright dates that were before some of my staff were born. So in this day, when we're talking about how, how well we are or aren't teaching history. So in the current events, there's a lot of conversation about who's left out of the history books, you know, whether it's Black Lives Matter, whether it's women's suffrage, whether it's Native Americans. And if you have an encyclopedia from 1990, it's a pretty good chance we're going to need to replace that as soon as somebody writes something new. But many of those we've already replaced with an electronic version. So we have kept a small set and moved it around to the end of the nonfiction. So we do have some reference books. We know that there will be a certain number of students who will come in with a free assignment to touch an actual dictionary, to touch an actual encyclopedia or an atlas, something like that, and to be exposed to that physical format. format, although we have better, more up-to-date and more constantly being updated data through the online dictionaries and the online encyclopedias. Because we're subscribing to Britannica Online and World Book Online, these are authoritative sources. And that's part of what we've been working with the school system, is to have the teachers understand that the e-encyclopedia is not Wikipedia. It's not just something they found on the internet. It's a paid subscription to the publisher who liked, you know, some things like the Oxford Dictionary, they stopped printing them a decade ago. You couldn't, you couldn't buy a new dictionary from them if you want to. You can only buy the e-version of it.
Yeah. No, it makes complete sense to me. Complete sense.
Other staffing news, Alison Horner, who is one of our reference librarians, and has been a mainstay through us getting started on all of these electronic, uh, remote options, until we hired Sarah Alvin, um, has a brand new son named Jeremiah. He arrived very nicely. And, um, I had checked with Ann and Stan and the trustees have contributed to a gift to, uh, welcome Jeremiah and to say thank you to Alison, who literally worked until 24 hours before she went into labor.
Wow.
So, um, now, part of that was because we're, we've been through the, the town has been incredibly, um, wise in my mind in terms of what we've done with staffing. Our staff have all remained employed. They remain, um, secure in their sense of where their employment is going. And in uncertain times, that's one of the things that makes it easy for people to come in and give 110%, because they're not distracted by those other worries. For some staff who needed the physical proximity to be gone, uh, we had the option to do telecommuting. And so, uh, one of the reasons Alison could keep working as long as she did was, we could take away that commute and that, you know, being in the building where, uh, we, we didn't want her to be exposed in any possible way. And, and yet, so we had this wonderful service. Again, I, I give a lot of credit and have said this to both staff and other people, that our town management has done a really good job. Um, we've retained all our staff. You know, there are other places that their staff have been furloughed. When you call them back, they may have new jobs. So we have a good staff that wanted to retain it, and Melissa has recognized that across all the departments, not just the library. So we're in much better shape than many communities when I hear, um, where their library staff are. And by keeping the staff, you are able to keep the services and drive out new things, which is of course really important to us at this stage.
So it's-
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just had a question about it. Is, uh, is the staff still, like, alternating weeks in the building?
In, in order to add visitors to the building, we had to bring everybody back. It's really because we've added an entire separate set of functions for the curbside operations.
Right.
Really needed to have everybody back. We were fortunate to have two weeks, a sort of, uh, so, you know, week zero, it was half the staff. The second, uh, week, we brought in part of the staff. So we did a gradual increase, uh, because it's very different to keep your distance when there's eight of you in the building versus when there's 16 to 18 of you in the building. So, uh, again, we had the, the luxury to be able to space ourselves in some of these activities. Sorry. And as we've added things in, we've had time to figure out some wrinkles and just make it be, you know, smoother by the time we had 16 to 18 people in the building. So again, we were able to do that for a couple of weeks, and now we've added in, let's start bringing in the patrons. Uh, I think, you know, we get the word phasing, and I've switched to the word increments. It's letting us, I think, be more successful when we roll out the next thing, because we've, we have the previous activities in pretty good shape.
The other thing, Kathleen, is Ann, you might wanna, I, maybe you were gonna mention it. Ann O'Brien?
Yes. Yes. So, uh, one of the, um, other things is that Sally Fowler, of course, had retired. We asked, um, to be able to advertise her position, and we were able to do so. We had a number of applicants, as well as an internal applicant. And, um, our preference always is when we have a good employee, is to give them the opportunity to, you know, have the bigger or the better job. And so Ann O'Brien, who's been, uh, who was, I think, a volunteer, and then she was repaid, and, um, has been a library assistant for several years now, was able to step into the job that Sally had. So she went from a 19-hours-a-week position to a 30-hours-a-week position, which is a big increase for her in, in many ways. And, well, certainly, um, she was delighted when she heard it. It means, of course, we now have an empty job for 19 hours a week for a library assistant. I have asked to be able to fill it. The town has a hiring freeze on, so, uh, each position has to be requested for review. They have told me that I can ask again at the end of August about that. The town is looking at its expenses month by month, and mid-September is when we're scheduled to, uh, begin at having, um, the hiring freeze on. So again, this is town-wide, not just to our department. And I'm optimistic that when it's time to, um, ask again, that we'll be able to make the case that we need that other position filled, now that we're doing even, you know, more activity than before. Our other, our other two members are Brett Sarbietz, who is the cataloger, and Mary Hodenstein, who is one of the Night and Moon again staff. And she has been very helpful to us as well as we were getting started again.
Yeah.
But I, so I think, Cindy, that's all our staff news that we've-
I think so.
The, the next one is the building, because the building always has its own special place. The, uh, the, um, bid for the-
It's possible to mute the dog?
Yeah. Whoever owns the dog can mute yours.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure whose puppy it was, because I know there-
Was it Chargus barking?
It's a few puppies. Um, we're, we're a puppy, we're a puppy household, I believe.
Yeah.
Anyway, the, uh, bid went out, or the request for bids went out for the engineering design on the historic stairs. We did have two responses. They've been reviewed, and I'm waiting to find out, uh, if the bid has been awarded to somebody or not. Um, periodically, I check with Steve Foster to find out. And as of last week, we had not heard anything yet about, uh, where the bid status was. The goal is to do that work probably next summer. We weren't gonna try and fit that in right now. The other thing, of course, is the roof, because the roof always comes back again. In the last storm, just before, I think it was Isabel who was hitting us, we always send the custodian up onto the roof to check that all the gutters and drains are not plugged. So we don't have a swimming pool on the roof, since we have a parapet. And, uh, some of the tiles have swung sideways. So they're attached. They're not in a position to be coming down, but they're not in the right orientation. So I'm working with Steve Foster. We have a roofing company, uh, who's able to deal with tiles. And we're trying to schedule them in now to just go in and take a check. We were able to do some aerial photography of all the clay tile parts of the roof. And there is a video of that, which I'm scheduled to get a copy, so I can have a look for myself to see how all of the tile is. And this is something that when we redid the flat roof in 2017, and, and you believe that it was three years ago when we did the Flat Roof project, it does seem to have disappeared today. The agreement was that there would be regular check of the clay tile roof, since we did not do that part of the roof in the project. And this is the first time since then that we've, we've really noticed anything that needs something. So, uh, overall, we're in very good shape. The, the new flat roof, um, I don't wanna jinx myself, but things have really been very good. All of those problems have gone away with that part of the roof. And then the, um, the next thing that I think, I think I've covered everything. I should say that I'm all set. I have one thing when Earl, as the treasurer, speaks, but otherwise, I think I've covered everything I wanted to cover for you.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, so we'll move on to treasurer's update?
Well, um, I, I've sent out a report that pretty much, uh, brings us up to date for the new fiscal year. The previous report, if you remember it, uh, covered 12 months of the past fiscal year. As I said in my email, um, two th- two major things. One, uh, our investments have pretty much bounced back to a level that's actually slightly higher than where we were, uh, before the COVID-19 imp, as I call it. And, uh, so far this year, there's been one check, um, we helped get the library ready to meet patrons by helping get the, uh, desk shields, is that what we're gonna call them?
Yeah, the, the health shield, yeah. Everybody was calling them germ barriers, which immediately has people feel nervous. So I was like, let's call them health shields. Health shield sounds so much better than germ barriers, yeah.
Yeah, my, my father was in the restaurant business. They called them sneeze guards.
Oh.
Yeah, you, you saw them on a salad bar, right?
Yes.
COVID protectors.
Yeah. So, just something to think about going, going forward, uh, based on, you know, what I've seen in the report, is, uh, one of the big expenses for the quarter, uh, was the, uh, charge by, um, Eaton Vance. And, you know, I, I think we need to think about, um, whether, uh, it's worth paying Eaton Vance, and I know we've talked about this before, but whether it's worth paying Eaton Vance, um, given that the self-managed funds have performed just as well, um, without, without the, uh, expense of a, a charge. And, and, you know, we, one argument about paying Eaton Vance was, well, if the market ever tanks, or, you know, we ever have a big problem, uh, they'll help us through. Well, we just had one of the, probably the biggest, uh, financial disasters as a result of COVID that I've seen in a long time. And both funds, uh, have come through and with, um, you know, keeping, keeping our investments whole. So, just something to think about.
So maybe in our September meeting, we should revisit that idea, because we have been putting that off about, um-
I was gonna say, we, it may, it may take longer than the September meeting, and, um, Mark may have some other input. I'm, I'm sure he does.
Well, I think it was the, Mark, the, um, the guidance for Eaton Vance was supposed to keep us from touching the funds during a dip, which we didn't do. And we didn't have to get that guidance. So I guess that was one of the rationales that we had for maintaining them.
Oh, you mean, to talk us down, you mean?
Talk us down from panicking, right?
Yeah.
Talk us off the cliff. Yeah, um-
Nobody's hands on the tiller, so to speak. So, you know, if we were gonna panic, uh, you know, it would've-
Well-
Would've been a process, right?
You know, maybe we, um, I mean, things have just been in such a weird state that maybe we, um, at the end of the year, we kinda do an analysis of, like, that fund minus, you know, minus the performance minus the fees compared to the other funds, you know, over a whole year period and-
Well, you can, you can go back and look at June's report for the previous fiscal year and see that. You, one thing you gotta keep in mind is, when we, um, re-energize the checking account, it doesn't come from Eaton Vance. It comes from the Fidelity. And the only reason Eaton, you know, there's been some activity in Eaton Vance, um, funds, but the main reason for the activity is they have to sell shares so that they can collect their, uh, quarterly fee. And the quarterly fee runs about 700 bucks.
Maybe we should tell them we wanna pay them the fee out of the account, write them a check.
Yeah.
Well, whatever, yeah. I, I think we definitely, um, need to do that. We also need to reconsider the whole tax ID thing, um, getting our own.
Yeah.
But all that stuff has kinda been put on hold, I know.
So, uh, Kathleen, the other thing is, um, at some point, I'm, I'm actually in quarantine right now, but even beyond that, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure we'll have the time. But, um, sometime within the next two quarters, I, I would like to go over the checkbook with, uh, your accountant, so to speak.
Yes.
Because I think there's a few checks in there that have never been cashed.
Okay. I can also have her go back and look at that, too. She should, um, we get a copy of the check account, checking account reports here. Um, and in theory, she does look at every, um, bank statement and does a reconciliation to see that checks have cleared. I'll ask her about it. It, um-
Well, what I can do, I'll email you the check numbers.
Uh, okay.
And then she can take a look at it. Did anybody have any other questions? Kathleen, you said you had something you wanted to-
Uh, just two things. I wanted to thank the trustees for, um, fronting us the money to buy the protective screens that are on the public desk. I, um, have to get the bill, uh, or the invoice, uh, invoice organized and, um, properly marked, paid with your check number, and I will submit it to the town. The town will reimburse the trustees for paying for those screens. One of our difficulties sometimes in purchasing things is that, um, there are vendors who no longer invoice. They want to be paid online right now with a credit card, which is one of the things that we can't do unless a person on the staff, usually me, um, uses her personal credit card and then tries to get reimbursed from the town. And it can be done, but it's not, it's not the best process to use. Um, I particularly don't like using it to buy software, for instance. So there are instances where, uh, it would be helpful to have some of these things, be able to purchase them differently. So that was a really big help from the trustees.
Kathleen, this, that was a big amount, too. I don't think anybody would expect you to put on your, your personal card.
Well, and, and that's why I- Yeah. And that's why I asked, you know? There are many things, you know, if I'm buying something and it's a hundred dollars, you know, I don't really hesitate to do that. But, uh, something that large, I, I would not normally do that. And it almost never happens, you know? In however many years I've been here, maybe once or twice or something like that. But, um, I do plan on having the town reimburse the trustees for that. The other thing is that, uh, we were thinking, with curbside, we might need to have a canopy tent outside. And we were able to find something that was, um, selling and shipping quickly in a good deal. And the friends at the library were very helpful. And, uh, they actually have a debit card because they are a separate 501(c)(3) organization. And so sometimes they will, uh, be my purchasing agent for me, and we will reimburse them. So I will submit a bill to the trustees to pay for the tents. And I think that was about $500 compared to the, the shield. And the, the last thing that I wanted to mention around finance is that there are times when, uh, timing is of the essence to make a purchase. And we don't have a board meeting coming up. And so, uh, one of my suggestions for you to think about was, uh, what I've done in the past was I would contact the chairperson and say, here's what we need, and would get the chairperson's, um, opinion on it, and then usually talk to either the vice chair or to the treasurer and say, uh, again, so we'd have two members of the board say, yes, we're ahead. I'm wondering if we wanna formalize that process, and you set a dollar limit that said, when there are these sort of unexpected purchases where timing is an issue, that, you know, contacting the chair and the treasurer is sufficient to say, go ahead with the purchase. And for me, I'm thinking maybe that's like a $500 limit. Uh, it would be very unusual. There would be anything more expensive than that, that, um, they couldn't wait for the board.
I think that's a very good idea. I know we've done that in the past, Kathleen, you and I, and, um, I think it, I think it's a good idea.
Well, I wondered about formalizing it just again, so that the, the board has it as a process on record. And so there's no question in the future that, well, well, how come that one board member was doing this and the board wasn't being consulted? It's just, it's a process that, that's been a little bit, um, uh, on the cuff for us. But it might be something that's helpful, uh, to have a standard process.
Does someone wanna make a motion to do that now? Does someone want to make a motion to do that now?
I was just gonna ask, Kathleen, do you have a suggested motion that we could make?
I don't really have a suggested motion. I, we can probably come up with a.
I can come up with a motion, but if you could answer one question first, it'd be helpful. Would this be for things that would specifically be reimbursed at a later date?
Not necessarily. So I could give you two examples. One was to ask about the board contributing to the gift for the new baby's arrival. Because we found something to purchase and we wanted to get it, but it was a little more expensive than just the staff members contributing whatever they felt comfortable with. And the trustees contributing $50 meant the difference between picking that gift or something else. Another example was just because the staff have been so wonderful, I would like to do something, maybe next week, suddenly one day, everybody's gonna have a mini box of Frederick pastries sitting on their desk when they get to work. So there are things like that that are often, I would say tokens or things like that, or.
Yeah, I have a, I have a concern. I am concerned that the board should be more proactive in what we spend our money on. And this, I don't want this to take us to a point where the only thing we do is, you know, approve expenses that other people have decided on. So if we had, you know, I'd be a little more comfortable if we had a budget that said, you know, this year, we're gonna spend whatever on donations to other people or staff appreciation or whatever. And we really don't have that. So I'm kind of okay with it, you know, we've actually done this before. So I'm not that uncomfortable with it. But I don't want to see the board abdicate its responsibility of where we should be spending our money to a place where we're only approving expenses that somebody else has decided are necessary.
So maybe this has two pieces to it. Maybe as Earl says, we create this little fund that Kathleen would be drawing from. But then that other issue Kathleen you had is a separate, it's separate from this fund, you know? And maybe having the fund will prevent you from needing to come to the chair or vice chair or treasurer, except for these unusual purchases, like the screens and things like that. Those are unusual.
So now, so now I'm getting confused. So traditionally, each year, the trustees have put $10,000 in the checking account or some such, right?
Yes.
And have you, when you spend any of that money, have you gotten approval for each expenditure from that $10,000?
It would depend on the amount. So some of the things, for instance, and we have, can't think of quite the right adjective, we have a, we have a budget of sorts in which that when I present the budget request to you in January, I ask for $10,000 for the checking account of the coming year. And in that request, I say what we would probably use those, you know, the plans, what will we use that $10,000 for? But that's in the budget request. And part of that, for instance, is that we will pay for staff to have a membership to join the American Library Association, or we will pay for staff members or recruits. So some of that is decided ahead of time and put into this, what I'll refer to as a basic budget. The reason that I say that it's a basic budget is that we look at it, you know, once and we put a little bit of, you know, numbers to it and then just use it through the year. What we hadn't done was the second step, and this is the part when Mark arrived and Earl arrived, we got started and we've lost the momentum because of all the activities that, you know, we've suspended, was to match up what we're spending with how that relates to the intent of the donor. For instance, and I know Earl in particular and Mark had looked at, and we've talked about how do we decide how much money we spend this year when the donation intent was for this, and the donation intent was for staff support. And we were inching closer to having those two sides of the budget decision made when we had our last meeting. That's actually another, it's a good topic today, but it's back on the agenda, is to finish that part of the process. Does this sound familiar, Earl and Mark?
Yes, it does. And so I'd like to get us part of the way there. I really agree with Earl that we should have a formalized budget process, which I think we can do at the beginning of each year, and then provide freedom of action for these smaller expenditures to Kathleen and Cindy. So, but I think there's another one here that makes sense for us to take a motion on. So I'd like to propose that we allow the expenditure of up to $1,500 by approval of the chair and the treasurer, if that expenditure would be reimbursed. So that, in particular, that allows us, allows Kathleen with two other decision makers to make a quick purchase that where time is of the essence. But we know that that money will be coming back. So it's really there to provide flexibility. But I do agree with Earl that we should go at a later time and talk about what the budget should be for the entire year in sync with the donor priorities that we've already discussed.
Now, Mark, just to be clear, when you say reimbursed, how would that, how would those expenses be reimbursed?
From the town?
By the town or?
Yeah, from the town.
Okay.
Yeah, but what about like smaller things, like, you know, doing something for the staff, you know, like?
I agree. I think that's excluded from this motion because we should budget that and provide full freedom of, for Kathleen to act up to that amount.
All right.
So Stan, as an example, I mean, we normally don't make expenditures that get reimbursed. But I think what Kathleen's finding is going forward, we're gonna probably see more of that. And the one example that we just did was the health shields. You know, she was presented with a situation where she needed to get them done fast. A vendor that could do them quickly, you know, doesn't go through the purchase order routine. So that's what we did.
So with that, but that expense will be reimbursed by the town, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
And to be honest, you know, maybe I shouldn't say this, but when I looked, when Kathleen asked about it, I said, you know, if we don't get reimbursed, this certainly qualifies as money spent for the benefit of the employees, right, the staff. There's no doubt about it. We're protecting them from getting COVID. You know, if we get reimbursed by the town, which they said they would, that's all the better.
Sorry.
Let me just get Mark's motion, right?
Yeah, that's what I was. Well, so does that mean that if we have like something like that out of the blue that we didn't budget for at the beginning of the year? And it's something, you know, really needed, time is of the essence. And say the town wasn't gonna reimburse, then that's not gonna really fit into that motion.
Correct. That would be excluded. That would have to come before the full committee. And I think we can accommodate some of that in a budget resolution that we make at the beginning of the fiscal year, or we could do it tomorrow if we want, in our next meeting.
I'm very comfortable with all these suggestions. I, all of these things feel like they will help us, like you say, sometimes, you know, act work. And they can give us the ability to just plan ahead. So I'm very comfortable with whatever you decide with these things.
For me, the one thing I would add to this discussion, though, Earl and Mark, is that the budget, I don't see how we can independently come up with a trustee's budget, if you will, without a lot of input from Kathleen, right? I mean, she needs to get creative and ask us for stuff. And we need to put it in a budget and then give her the money, if that's what it is. I can't, I can't think of situations in which we would independently come up with a budget and say, okay, here's money, go do what we, do what we budgeted. I don't know how that would work.
Well, I think they're categorical budgets, right? They would be budgets based on what our donors have asked us to spend money on. So the budget would be targeted to support the donor's wishes. But they would be categorical. They wouldn't be specific. And then, and therefore, that would allow some level of freedom of action within certain. We could put amounts on that, et cetera.
Right. But having said that, so let's say we have a category that's for staff betterment, right?
Yeah.
I.e. training, right? And we put some number in there, $10,000, right, per year? And Kathleen says, I don't know how I can spend $10,000, or I'm not comfortable spending that, or something. Then what happens to that? How does that work? If Kathleen doesn't feel comfortable trying to use the budget that we've put together?
Well, I think that, I understand your point, but I think that is a point of discussion we should have.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Okay. I'm good.
You know, I, my, you know, one of the things we, you know, we could be spending money on things that we don't really wanna, either wanna spend money on, or we don't have the donors that express the desire to spend that much, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's true. On the other hand, I would say that, you know, my experience has been, we just don't spend that much at all.
Well.
So, you know, I'd be more than happy if Kathleen came to us and said, I have the need for, pick a number, $25,000 broken down by this, and would you, would you give me $25,000? And, you know, I would seriously consider it, whatever it is, right? Sure, yeah, let's talk. That would be great. Let's have that.
I'll represent Bill, who's not here. I mean, his point is, he's got, you know, he had a, apparently was close to a donor who said, here, this is for employee betterment. And, you know, to your point, we haven't been able to spend that proportion of our, of our annual expenses.
Right.
But I think what we're saying, what we're also saying in a budget is maybe, maybe we think of this as an annual not to exceed, that we are, we are willing to put up with this, put up this much money. If it gets spent, great. If it doesn't, after two or three years in a row, maybe we should decide what it should be spent on. Because we're not getting the creativity that we want. Not that I ever think that'll happen, but that's, that would be the fallback.
Okay. Okay. I'm okay with that.
Yep. And also in a regular budget process, if I look at the town, you know, I have some plan about what the services will be for the coming year. And I request this much money for salary, this much money for heating electricity. And so, you know, how the money is chosen to be spent, part of it is that I will come with a request, you know, as an annual budget process. And we've done this in the past, but it's been a very simple exchange, not very detailed. And so this is partly of our maturation, is that we have this same kind of conversation about, you know, budgets going forward, but it's a little bit more detailed, but the conversation takes more than one unit. But I think in a standard budget process, there's someone who has the money, usually your treasurer or your accountant. And then you come with, you know, a plan for what you think you want to do over a certain amount of time. And then we try to match the resources with the desires that we're certainly prepared to, you know, help in that part of the process. And of course, we have our long-range plan at some point that, you know, we'd go back and say, you know, these are places where we thought we would be expanding in some way. Usually not about staff, but more about other kinds of things, like, you know, could we find an auxiliary space where we had other activities happening? Today, you know, our auxiliary space is YouTube and Zoom. And who knew? You know, six months ago, I would have been thinking that the auxiliary space was virtual and not physical. So that's part of what happens, you know, time passes and you learn new things.
Mark? Do you want to read the motion again?
Me? Allow expenses of up to $1,500 to be approved by the chair, and I think you had said treasurer.
Treasurer, yes.
As long as it will be reimbursed.
And if you want to add by the town, that's okay, too.
Okay. Okay. Second, someone want a second?
Stan had seconded.
Oh, we did, okay. All right, so we'll have a vote, but we need to do a roll call vote. So. Eva?
In favor?
Earl?
In favor?
Stan? Stan? Stan is muted. Oh, just go.
I'm on, I'm on dog mute. Yes.
Okay. Mark? And Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that's all in favor, except Bill is not here. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Kathleen, before I forget the idea, perhaps, you know, given what we've talked about, the staff has kind of moved around and changed, whatever. If there's, if there's something that would make their lives easier, given what they're operating under COVID-19, whether it's, you know, we mentioned the tent outside or something else. If there's something like that, you know, maybe we could talk about that at the next meeting. If there's some items that trustees could spend some money on to make life easier for them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Cindy and I will think about that. We've been very fortunate in that the town has said that, you know, if these things are needed specifically because of the COVID circumstances, that the town, you know, bears the expense. And it is not coming out of our regular budget, which means that we still have all that money they gave us at town meeting, which we're starting to prepare to spend on renewing all of our electronic databases, adding lots more books to the overdrive account. And now that we're doing curbside, start buying physical books and DVDs again as well to go. So we had a very favorable vote at town meeting. They voted our entire budget for the town, not just the library, with hardly a question about it. So I think our budget, we are at $1,156,000 and change this year. And in addition, at the town meeting, they voted the $350,000 to support the renovation of the historic stairs. So the town manager has repeatedly said she believes that we're going to be okay in fiscal '21. And she's not planning at this time to make changes to what we're doing, but that we'll be watching by quarter to see if we need to retrend. She said she thinks it will be FY '22 when things may be different and slimmer. And so that's part of where I keep holding on to the state aid cash when I believe times might not be as good as they have been. We've been very fortunate with our state aid in the past several years. I've kept most of it. We've been planning to use it for some things like work on the bathrooms and stuff. And that work, you know, had been delayed for whatever reason. So those funds are still there. We can use them for anything, including staff salary sometimes if things come up. So we can't add people, but we can use it to cover, cover some of those kinds of costs that typically we can't move money from someplace else in the budget. So I am not, however, expecting necessarily to have much in the way of state aid from the state. So I am not, however, expecting necessarily to have much in the way of state aid from the state from this year. I expect that the state's budget and the state's revenue for FY21 will not necessarily look as good as what the end of this income. So I think that we think, I think of what we have in the bank right now for state aid is what we should consider our own and not necessarily plan. In the past few years, we've gotten about $35,000 each year, and we've only spent a portion of it. So we've been bankrolling it for rainy days, because we know we've had them in the past for libraries and for towns musical budgets.
And who knows, like, that could potentially change for next year with this whole crisis pandemic. So I even, I have one other unrelated question, having to do with like schools starting up again. Are you going to be like, will the staff be kind of working closely with the schools again and working on elementary? I mean, well, for all of them, like, library cards and all of that?
We are. One of the things that we need to start planning in the next couple of weeks is the library card campaign that every student has a working card. I've been following the school committee meetings and their votes and things like that. It looks at the moment like the first day of school will be September 16th. But the staff will be back starting August 31st, so they have a couple of weeks to get ready for whatever the new year will look like. There have been a number of proposals about what, how school might operate. They have a somewhat different scenario for the high school versus the elementary schools. The high school has the independent reading course, which we were a co-sponsor of last year, where the Stevens librarian went into the English classroom, worked with the students selecting books to read for their actual curriculum. We're planning to still support that course. It may be that we'll be doing that as a virtual visit to the class instead. But we've been in touch with the English teacher and the librarian that we co-sponsored the course with. And they're planning on seeking the course and they're planning on us working with them. We just don't know exactly how that will be. The children's librarian, Charlotte Aradondo, is in touch with the elementary school librarians. And typically, we have school visits. And so Charlotte's pretty comfortable on camera. So we may be doing a school classroom visit using video cameras or maybe it'll be a planned book talk that we put up on YouTube and the teachers can, you know, click in whenever they want. In some ways, more teachers will be able to do this than before, because many of the classes didn't have the ability to walk.
Right.
Allowed to serve with it. So we're looking for what things we've done in the past, how to be service it, but in a different medium, like circle. And we're looking to do things that we can do with the town. Once again, is that the fourth month of some activity, and they've created the commission for inclusion, equity, and diversity. And this goes along very closely with the town's Raise Values Initiative, which is a big initiative in the school. I'm working closely with Brian Tuvie, the head of the history department in the high school, which dovetails with the Rose Amity program, the Rose Amity High School After School Club, and now with the commission. So we're looping around between departments and committees that, and I told people, we have the resources to buy the books, to buy the movies. We have staff who are willing to put things together, like the talks and book kits, to be delivered virtually or book kits that, you know, come through curbside to support these kinds of activities. So we're getting the message out to the teachers that it will be different, but we still plan to do as much as we possibly can. They just need to let, let it flow, whatever it is that they're doing, so as to find ways to help them. And we have a lot of strong connections with different faculty and admin in the school district. So I think we will do it. Right now, they are, I'm sure, so swamped. I am, I'm not emailing them a lot. I think they've got so many things that, right, we know something, they will let me know. I have been following the school committee at this stage. It's a good way to see what kind of progress we're making in the system. And of course, the scary part is whatever we start to do, since we've been reading about the University of North Carolina, you can have a plan. And then after a few weeks, you'll find out that plan doesn't work anymore and you're going to have to change and go back opposite direction. So that's the part for us is again, to be prepared to do one thing and recognize, maybe we're going to have to shift and be able to shift as quickly as we can to still keep supporting activities.
That sounds good. Okay. Well, anything else? Anybody? For today? No?
So in September, I'm thinking the next meeting is September 22nd, which is back to our regular Fourth Tuesday?
I have. Yes, it is. I have contacted the cable station to confirm that that date is available for a video meeting, because I'm expecting that we will be doing virtual meetings for a while longer. I have not had a confirmation that the date is available for that film. But since you've been met up, I will follow up with them again. And the important thing at this stage is to get on the calendar fairly early, because probably in September, there will be more activity with some of the other boards and commissions. So I put our request in early, so hopefully that means.
Yeah. Well, if not, we'll adjust.
First tips. But I did want to try to get us back to those regular dates again.
Okay. All right. Well, is that it? Anybody else have anything?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Everyone in favor? Oh, we should do the roll call. I'm in favor. Eva?
I'm in favor.
Stan?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, then.